We'll go ahead and get started with this evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order for the City of Montgomery City Council meeting. It is 6 o'clock PM on the dot. With that, let's start with our invocation given by Mr. Wilkerson.
We come tonight with humble hearts and bow to you. Lord, we come thanking you for all that you've done in our life, Lord. We pray, Lord, that you give us some clean hearts and some clean minds, Lord. Give us patience and understanding. Give us respect for one another, not only in this town but in this nation. Heal our broken hearts, Lord. Unite us into one. And we pray this prayer. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen. That will start with the Pledge of Allegiance, United States.
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 One Nation, God.
One God.
Liberty and Justice for All.
Justice for All.
The Texas flag?
Honor the Texas flag.
Honor the Texas flag. Our pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and endless good.
This evening, the Visitor and Citizens Forum. I understand Mr. Moxley would like to speak. Mr. Moxley, would you like me to read your letter or would you just like to go ahead and speak on your behalf yourself?
Since I'm here, I can go and speak on my behalf.
Great. You have the floor, sir.
Thank you very much. My name is Nathan Moxley and I am the Secretary for the Board of Directors for Montgomery Little League. And tonight I am speaking on behalf of all of the board. This year has been especially trying year for Montgomery Little League. And as you are acutely aware, all of our community as a whole. Last spring, our state and county governments put regulations in place prohibiting us from providing our services and our facilities to children that desperately needed it. Youth sports activities that these kids disrupted from their regular lives relied on to feel a sense of normalcy during the lockdowns. Many leagues across the country, the state, and the nation didn't resume or even begin a youth baseball season. However, through the work of this Board of Directors and working with local officials like you, we found a way to proceed and even finished the spring season. Additionally, we were able to complete a successful fall season adhering to the restrictions that have been put in place. During this time, we were able to continue the progress we had been making in improving the facilities we provide for our community. Nearly $100,000 has been spent in the past year to improve the complex at West Montgomery County Park. All four of our main fields received dugout makeovers, increasing the space and privacy allocated to the players, and improving the aesthetics of each of the fields. We were also able to build a brand-new covered lighted batting facility, increasing the number of cages available at our park to nine. We've improved the drainage in the walkway areas and added asphalt where there had previously been dirt and mud. Our netting over the concessions and between fields improved the safety of the complex. And privacy screens all around utility areas have given the complex a much more professional feel. In short, the City of Montgomery's youth will be experiencing the absolute best Little League experience in the area. What I come here for today is to ask for your support, for the support of this council, the city staff, and the guests to help make this year's opening day on February 27th at 9:00 AM the most memorable in Montgomery Little League's history. We ask for each of you to show your support for Montgomery Little League by attending our opening day ceremonies, touring the new complex, and being a part of the Montgomery Little League family on this important day. Lastly, it would be our honor to invite Mayor Countryman to throw out the ceremonial opening pitch. That will take place at the conclusion of the ceremony. And I look forward to hearing back from you to arrange the details. Thank you.
Mayor, you're on mute. There you are.
I'd love to go and I'll start practicing with a tennis ball right now so I don't embarrass myself and hold it like a bowling ball or something. Thank you so much, Mr. Moxley. I appreciate that.
Sounds great. Thank you, guys.
Do you need a head count in advance?
No.
All right. Well, that was no small feat what you've done. I've got several parents across the state that I'm friends with that have, their kids did not get to play and it's been challenging financially all the way around. In fact, y'all were able to pull that off is stellar. Good job.
Thank you.
All right. With that, we will move on to our consent agenda. Matters, Consent Agenda. Number one, matters related to the approval of minutes of the December 8, 2020 regular meeting. Number two, consideration of possible action regarding adoption of the election services agreed by and between the City of Montgomery and Montgomery County Elections for the May 2, 2021 election. Number three, consideration of possible action regarding adoption of the joint election agreement by and between the City of Montgomery and Montgomery County Elections for the purpose of sharing jointly, conducting elections to be held on May 1, 2021. Number four, consideration of possible action regarding adoption of an escrow agreement by and between the City of Montgomery, Texas and the Panda Restaurant Group, Inc. for the Panda Express Track Development Number 2010. Counsel, you could take these cumulatively or singularly. What is your pleasure?
I'll do it all together.
Yeah, take them together. I'll second.
Okay.
It is been moved and seconded. Consider all of these items as one together. This motion's debatable. Amendable requires majority vote. It is now open for discussion.
Is this a motion to approve all of them together?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, a motion to approve.
Okay, I'm going first by Kevin. Thank you.
The second was by Julie.
Yes, thank you.
All those in favor of accepting the Consent Agenda as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. The motion carries and we will accept the Consent Agenda as presented. The next item of business on your agenda, consideration of possible action. Item number five, consideration of possible action to schedule a public hearing to be held on February 9, 2021 for the purpose of reviewing the need to continue City of Montgomery Ordinance 2018-05 Juvenile Curfew Ordinance codified in Division 2 of Chapter 62 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Montgomery, Texas, in accordance with Section 370.002 of the Texas Local Government Code and determine whether the city shall abolish, continue, or modify the ordinance.
The city is required to hold a hearing and review the juvenile curfew ordinance every three years. It was last reviewed in 2018 and is due for review this year. Police Chief Anthony Solomon will be reviewing the ordinance for recommendations he feels might be considered for any necessary updates for a future meeting. So our recommendation is to call the public hearing for the purpose of reviewing the City of Montgomery Ordinance 2018-05 Juvenile Curfew Ordinance for February 9, 2021.
And just to clarify, the only thing that we're doing is approving or not approving a public hearing, correct?
Yes, ma'am, correct. What you're doing tonight is just setting that hearing date. Then you'll be able to take the testimony and comments from the public. Chief Solomon will be able to provide any recommendations. And then, of course, council will be able to discuss how it wants to proceed.
I'll make a motion that we accept this item as presented.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that we accept item number five as presented. This motion's debatable, amendable, and requires majority vote. It is now open for discussion. All those in favor of accepting item number five as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. The motion carries and we will accept item number five as presented. Number six on your agenda, consideration of possible action on a resolution regarding a petition for consent to annexation of land into proposed Montgomery County Municipal Utility District Number 160 as submitted by Hillary Dumas.
Developer of the mud is requesting to add this parcel of land into their mud to facilitate the mud creation process. Some of the points to consider in this request are, the requested parcel has an existing building with living quarters which could provide the housing needed for the residents who will vote for the mud election. The alternative to the mud voter living in this location will be to move a manufactured home onto the property currently in the mud. The likely location for this would put it adjacent to the Buffalo Springs Bridge across from Waterstone, considering the availability in that area to local existing utilities. And we feel that there may be a number of the public who would negatively perceive that, but it's a requirement for the mud to have a resident there in place. The city council, in order to allow the manufactured home to be in place, if it went that route, would have to grant a variance to the existing ordinances to allow that. That parcel to be annexed is currently owned by the developer. And once that parcel is annexed into the mud, it cannot be removed from the mud. So that is a permanent addition. This property would be subject to the mud tax. It may not be subject to the Home Owners Association depending on how that is set up by the developer. And obviously, this does not take it out of the city's jurisdiction. It will still be in the city, still be subject to city taxation. And I believe I did see that Ms. Dumas was on. I did not know if she had additional comment to make.
I don't. I'm just here in case there are any questions.
Thank you. And so this item is presented to the council as you see fit. From my point of view as a recommendation, I don't see a negative for the city to allow this to go forward as requested. But if there's any questions, we'd be happy to take them. Your attorney has reviewed this. He is on the line. And of course, Ms. Dumas is here for questions as well.
Richard, if we gave a variance for this, for the manufactured home, would it be an indefinite variance? Or would it just be for a set term, like, you know, three years until the subdivision is built out? Or?
Well, I'm of the opinion that you could set limitations on that. And
You could. You could. As a general rule, variances run with the land, but you're entitled to apply conditions to variances. So you could make them for some specific time period.
What's the time frame? Isn't it like six months they have to have it there so they can qualify for the mud or whatever?
Realistically, it would probably be a little more than that. They have to, they have to have a person that lives there long enough to get a driver's license and voter ID registered at that location. You have to time it with the timing of an election because they also have to have their uniform election dates same as cities. So.
From our standpoint, there's a third-party vendor that is often used when you're creating a mud that provides the manufactured home. They bring it in, but their requirement is basically, the minimum would be nine months because you have to get a tenant. And most people don't want to move, you know, in less than nine months. So it's typically nine months to a year. We expect we'll have houses on the ground in six months. So from our perspective, we also didn't want a trailer kind of in a nice new subdivision where we're trying to sell houses and lots. And it's adjacent to the road and it just wasn't something that we felt was ideal.
Hillary, are there any concerns in the future with the section that you're talking about annexing being completely separate from the neighborhood? Like on the long term, how do you explain the tax rate increase for that one little lot versus this entire?
So in general, and when we went through the initial kind of discussions with the city about the mud, that we have actual, we have multiple tracks that we may ultimately annex into the mud that are not adjacent to Section 1 or Section 2 of Town Creek Crossing. They would have totally different, they would be different developments. They might be different. It might be like in the case near the property near Ransums. It's 15 acres. We've looked at kind of a duplex townhouse, kind of more of a multifamily type project there. That could be in the mud as well. That's listed as one of the properties that we would. So we don't really see any issue with it not being adjacent. It will show up. Obviously, it shows up, it's a recorded item. So it shows up on your tax roll. It shows up anytime title is pulled. I personally own the land. It's somewhere that, right now, it's a metal building. It looks like a barn, but it has a one-bedroom apartment in it. And so it was just for us a logical place to have a tenant. They can stay for a year or more. So from their perspective, like, it makes sense. It's actually, it's a little over three acres. It's somewhere that we personally talked about building a house. I'd like the school district to fix the air conditioning noise, but that's a different story. Though we really don't have an issue, you know, with it. In somewhat, you pay more in taxes because it will be subject to the mud taxes, but they also have the ability to utilize those amenities if in the future we choose to sell it.
Hillary, this is Kevin. My wife would like to volunteer me to live in this trailer.
It's gonna be really nice. The one-bedroom apartment's gonna be really nice. It has all-new flooring and everything.
It's too good for me.
It might be my mother-in-law's suite down the road.
This is a typical standard practice for new neighborhoods going in. I mean, I would be wanting to make a motion to accept these terms. Are there any other questions about it or how you guys feel?
Better. Yeah, to us, it was a better option than having a trailer on site and something that, you know, it doesn't require a variance. It just is a cleaner transaction for the city and for us.
And Kevin, from the city's point of view, the points I made earlier, I think there is some benefit to the city, you know, to stay away from the visibility of that trailer home on a main road when you cross from the subdivision. And so this is coincidentally, I think, beneficial to both parties.
Totally agree.
Richard's really looking forward to getting those calls asking what the City of Montgomery is doing with the trailer park.
So Kevin, did you make a motion?
No, I can though. I'm trying to get back down to my little meeting thing here.
I'll go ahead and make the motion to move to consent to the land annexation into the mud and act on the resolution.
Second.
It is been moved and seconded that we consent to the land annexation into the mud and act on the resolution. That motion's debatable, amendable, and requires majority vote. It is now open for discussion. All those in favor of the land annexation and act on the resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. The motion carries and we will accept the consent to the land annexation into the mud and the resolution.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Richard.
Thank you, Hillary.
Next item of business on your agenda is item number seven. Consideration of possible action regarding adoption of the following ordinance. An ordinance of the City of Montgomery, Texas, providing for the holding of a general election to be held on May 1, 2021 for the purpose of electing three city council members, places one, three, and five, approving election service agreements with Montgomery County, Texas, and providing details relating to the holding of such election. Consideration of possible action respective, do I need to?
Very nice.
Okay, I'll not bore you. Okay, it is now open the floor.
And this is just the adoption of the ordinance calling the May 1, 2021 general election. It's pretty much a requirement for the city council to act.
Richard, I move to approve the adoption of the ordinance to hold the general election on May 1, 2021.
Okay.
It has been moved and seconded that we adopt the ordinance calling for the May 1, 2021 city election. This motion's debatable and amendable requires majority vote. It is now open for discussion. All those in favor of adopting the ordinance calling the May 1, 2021 city general election, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. The motion carries and we will adopt the ordinance calling of the May 1, 2021.
Move in.
Thank you.
Next item of business on your agenda is item number eight. Consideration of possible action regarding the updated signature cards and signers for all city banking accounts.
Due to the changes on city council, we need to update the signature cards for the city banking accounts. The current signers on the accounts that are still with the city, Mayor Sarah Countryman, Councilman Tom Cronin, and myself. And what my plan would be is to add each of the remaining city council members who are not currently signers as signers unless there's any among you who would prefer not to be listed. And then we'll take that to the bank. We'll have them draw up the paperwork and bring it back to get signatures from everyone. And that would give us the maximum number of signers available in case, you know, in case the people who primarily sign, primarily the mayor and myself, may not be available due to vacation or other emergency.
Okay.
City administrator, take action to have the updated signature cards prepared for city banking accounts.
Second.
It is been moved and seconded that we authorize the city administrator to take action to have the updated signature cards prepared for city banking accounts. This motion's debatable, amendable, and requires majority vote. It is now open for discussion. All those in favor of authorizing the city administrator to take action to have the updated signature cards prepared for city banking account, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The ayes have it. The motion carries and we will authorize the city administrator to take action to have the updated signature cards prepared for city banking accounts. Next item of business on your agenda, number nine. Review and discuss Chapter 6 of the City Code of Ordinances, expanding the area and time for allowing the public to walk with alcoholic beverages in a defined area in downtown Montgomery.
Prior to the start of the COVID-19 pandemic, city staff was asked to investigate options related to the extension of the legal provision that allows public to walk around in the defined area with alcohol during special events by extending this area to be effective on a regular basis. The defined area is generally in the historic downtown area that is home to many restaurants and shops, as well as the area for special events that are held during at least a normal year. Staff has considered some minor changes to the area and made some updates on the proposed mapping that is attached to provide greater clarity and uniformity to the designated boundary. We've also discussed the proposed expansion of dates from special events to this being a full-time provision while still being limited by time of day, both with the city's attorney and also discussed with the police chief, with neither having objection to these modifications. Staff expects this could be a boost to several downtown businesses that sell alcohol in the historic district, as well as other local shops that could benefit from additional foot traffic. What we're asking for tonight is not any, not an approval of this. We're looking for guidance from city council. Is this something you want us to proceed to bring something updated back to city council for future approval? Do you desire additional discussion? You know, we've looked at and essentially we're coming back to council for guidance.
So currently, Richard, is it typically when the event is over with? For instance, Wine Fest at 9:00, that's when we're supposed to not have alcoholic drinks walking around?
Well, it's listed in the ordinance as existing. The exception is based on the time of day. And it's different for certain days of the week when there are those events. For instance, Monday through Saturday, it's 7:00 AM to midnight. And then on Sundays, it's, sorry, Sundays, it's noon to midnight. And on Saturdays, you know, it's through 1:00 AM. So, you know, there's a little bit of variation in there for the exact day of the week, but it's written around special events. In our reading of this, the ordinance doesn't actually list the special events. And so, you know, we interpret that to be the special events as, you know, they've been approved by council. Even if city council doesn't want to take action to do any longer-term expansion, I do think we need to come back and kind of clean up a few of the gaps in the ordinance anyway. But again, that's one of the reasons why we are coming to council to seek guidance here. Is this a direction that y'all want to move? Is it something you'd rather, you know, have a longer-term consideration and discussion? We've looked into the matter and it's certainly doable. I know there's other cities around the state that do this sort of thing. So it's not that we would be the only ones.
Richard, the only problem I have is you've got, it says alcohol, and I don't think it would be wise for people to walk around with a mixed beverage. So I think it should be specific to beer and wine.
And start at 6:00 AM.
Yeah, appreciate the input there. And that's certainly the kind of thing that we can take into modification to bring back to council.
How, is that how other cities do it? That seems to be right. I don't think I recall mixed drinks being a part of what is available.
In Fredericksburg, you're allowed to walk into retail stores. A lot of times they have complimentary wine. But you can walk around just, of course, as long as you're not inebriated. But I just thought it would help the retailers in the historic downtown area to be able to do that, whether it's to provide a complimentary or just allow somebody to come into their shop with a glass of, a plastic cup of wine or a beer while they, you know, look at some of the retail items and consider shopping and buying. I would not be able to, so I certainly don't have to recuse myself. Because I have a mixed beverage license, I can't sell wine, beer, or alcohol out the front door. But I think it would benefit people like Whitley, probably Rindy, H-Wine, some of those folks. It would probably benefit them a little bit to be able to provide, you know, cups of, plastic cups of wine so people can walk around the downtown district during, whether it's a Saturday or, you know, maybe a Thursday evening shopping night or something like that.
I couldn't agree more. And also, are little groups a good place if they leave there and go to a dinner or something? Or, I mean, this would also fall under that, correct?
To my knowledge.
Yeah.
So is there a way to have a public meeting on this as well? Because after speaking to several people that live in the downtown area, there were big concerns about this.
Well, I would say, I'm sure we could, but what days are this currently allowed? Are we talking like Thursday through Sunday type situation, Richard? Or are we talking seven days a week?
Seven days a week.
Yeah. I would be fine for Thursday to Sunday, but it depends on what enforcement would really look like. I mean, are we gonna have the police officers out there looking for folks with a cup? I mean.
Julie, what were the concerns that people expressed?
The biggest concerns were extra littering. There's already quite a bit of theft going on in the downtown area from what I heard. And so the other concerns were the response time for the police department to get there on the scene if you have public intoxication and it goes down into the historic area. Another concern that was mentioned by a business owner was, you know, if one store is giving out one wine here and one wine there and one, how do you control whether or not you're serving someone who's intoxicated? At what point does it become a liability to people walking along 149? We already have traffic that's kind of out of control and over the speed limit. We've talked about that multiple times. And what happens if somebody accidentally missteps and it's in 149?
I think that, Julie, that could happen at a restaurant. And I think it's, obviously if you're wine, you can see the signs of inebriation. I mean, some people are better hiding.
It's the responsibility of a responsible restaurant operator to, number one, your stuff has to be schooled and certified by TBC to recognize those signs. We get people that come from other places and we don't serve them if they're obviously intoxicated. And some of the other owners of wine bars, et cetera, we've discussed it. And it's a huge liability for them if they do serve somebody that's obviously inebriated. And we've certainly refused service to a lot of people and I would hope that they also do.
Hey, Julie, you said something.
I'm curious about the theft downtown, though.
Yeah.
Can Chief Solomon address that? Have we had a lot of reports, I mean, filed?
No, we haven't. I was kind of curious about that myself. Are they not recording these thefts?
I'm not sure. Damon Haynes mentioned it to me, said that he's had quite a bit of theft out of his personal vehicle at Wings Over Montgomery and from contractor vehicles.
Is he locking it?
I'm not sure.
I will.
It was all being reported.
I will check again, but we've not had any burglaries of a motor vehicle. I will check again, but we've not had any burglaries of a motor vehicle. We normally look at those things every morning, and I haven't seen those. So I'll recheck and I'll get back to you.
Chief, I personally picked up about four pounds of pecans from the downtown area.
As far as the trash, I don't, I don't know that there's gonna be an increase of trash, just because if they're going from place to place, they're not gonna wanna, either they'll take the cup with them or they'll dispose of it in a location that they're drinking. I, I'd be willing to try it and see if these things come up, then maybe go back and address it. We certainly have that option, right, Richard, or is this?
Yes, Mayor. I mean, we, I mean, one, you know, if you, if you look at the way the ordinance is written out, you could put different exceptions on to days, you know, if you wanted to do it seven days a week, or if you just wanted to say Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday. Those become options. You could be a little more limiting or expensive on the hours of the day. You could also, you know, approve it, and then with the subject too, we will review it in six months, and if it, if it's not having the desired impact or has negative implications, plan to either rescind it or reaffirm it at that time. So, you know, city council, I think, has some pretty wide latitude in, in moving forward in one way or another. And, and, yeah, and like I said before, the intent is not, was to start the discussion tonight, you know, bring this forward, you know, and if council wants at a future time. And, you know, we can take this as quickly or go as slowly as council would like.
Richard, I'd like to see you guys go ahead and continue on, and if anything becomes a problem, then we'll address that. But, but yeah, we're trying to get to downtown, you know, keep it, keep things open and, and happening and fun, you know. So, I mean, if we have any issues, I'm, like Sarah said, I know that we will definitely address them very swiftly. But let's, you know, I think we should go ahead and open it up and, you know, allow our patrons to patron, if that makes sense.
So right, and also the winter time, when people aren't truly out in force, and what's the harm in having a public forum or a discussion that's open to the city so that we can hear from more people now when it's winter before spring, and then make, bring this back up at the next or February or March's council meeting?
That doesn't matter to me. I'm fine with that. It's up to y'all, obviously.
I've just checked our laws. This is Anthony. I've just checked our laws. We have no reports of any burglary of a motor vehicle in the city at all. I know a lot of cities are having them, but we, we haven't had any reports either.
Do we need us to approve this? Richard, do you need us just to approve you to work on this and get back with us, or do you need a motion of anything at all right now, or anything?
Honestly, I don't, I don't even need any specific motion on this. I just want to make sure I've got some clarity on what direction council wants us to move. Yeah, I've gotten some, I've gotten some input here on, you know, you know, limiting to beer and wine and not including mixed drinks. You know, you know, I think the, it sounded like that the area was not included, was not going to be a problem, you know, at least to bring forward on a draft. You know, certainly, you know, anytime we bring this forward, it will be in the format of an open meeting, so public is able to come and comment by comment for that. You know, it's up to council if you would rather we have this in a separate format, type of meeting, either a special meeting or hold it for a, maybe the first meeting instead of, instead of a second meeting of the month, have it during the first meeting of the month, or we can have this business. You know, any guidance on that, I'm definitely happy to take and bring it back as council would like.
I'm all for that, Richard. I think earlier in the month, I don't really see a, you know, having a public forum because the, certainly, the public is welcome to, to these meetings, and they also have the ability to go in the public comment section previous to the council. One thing I would recommend, Richard, is come up with like a nine-ounce plastic cup. That's not filled with nine ounces of wine. Usually, it's half of that. It's four. But that way, so people can't come in with a twelve- or sixteen-ounce cup to a retailer and say, hey, would you fill this with wine, complimentary wine? But I think you need to be specific on the container that people are walking around with and make sure that they're all consistent and uniform, the same thing.
Like a standardized cup or size of cup?
Thank you. I think, I think that's definitely, sounds like a wise consideration. All right. Then, it seems generally that we'll plan to bring this back at a first meeting of the month. You know, I think we'll probably be able to have enough in place to make that work for February, and, and we can take it then as council desires.
All right.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
And then, okay, now that there is nothing in our executive session, is there any council inquiry?
Yeah. Tom, Richard, I want to know, did you get any update on that speed limit? Did you, Chris check into that on ten ninety-seven?
I'll be speaking with Chris tomorrow, so I will, I will follow up with him on that. I don't have updated information from him on that, sir, but I'll make sure that he can give you a phone call or an email of follow-up and, you know, on that to, if there is anything, and if there isn't, I'll get him pushed back into reminding him to get that checked on.
All right. Thanks.
And I, I can't, I can tell you, it's not exactly what you're asking here, but, you know, the, you know, the police department has, you know, they have their, their speed equipment that they continually move around downtown, or, sorry, around the city in different areas, and they've, they've taken some of that more recently downtown because of some complaints of traffic in that area.
If there's nothing else for council inquiry, then I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mayor, I'd like to propose a motion to adjourn.
Second.
This has been moved and seconded that we adjourn. This motion's debatable, amendable, requires majority vote. All those in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The ayes have it, the motion carries. It is six thirty PM, and we will adjourn this meeting. Thank you so much. Everyone, have a wonderful evening, and a good week.
Good night.